Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we begin our meeting, we have presentations of honorary resolutions. We're pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First up is a resolution recognizing National Intern Day presented by Councilmember Chavez, myself, and Councilmember Cashman.
Good morning, everyone. We're super excited today to recognize National Intern Day and the incredible Urban Scholar Program here in the city of Minneapolis. We're joined here by city staff and our incredible urban scholars. If we can please give them a round of applause.[98.11][98.11](applause) So, whereas National Intern Day is celebrated annually to recognize and appreciate the contribution of interns across the country and to highlight the important role they play in workplace and communities, and whereas the city of Minneapolis values the talent, creativity, and commitment that interns bring to the public service and recognizes that internships provide critical pathways to future leadership and career opportunities, and whereas the Urban Scholars Program administered by the city of Minneapolis is a nationally recognized leadership and professional development initiative that invests in the future of young people from diverse backgrounds by providing meaningful work experience in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, and...
Whereas since its inception, the Urban Scholars Program has empowered hundreds of students and emerging leaders through hands-on experience, mentorship, and skill-building opportunities, fostering a more equitable and inclusive workforce, and whereas urban scholars contribute significantly to the work of city departments and partner organizations, bringing fresh perspectives, innovative ideas, and a deep commitment to public service and social justice, and whereas the city of Minneapolis reaffirms its commitment to nurturing future leaders, promoting diversity in public administration, and creating accessible career pipelines for all, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize National Intern Day and extends sincere appreciation to all interns serving in the in city departments and beyond and gives special recognition to the Urban Scholars Program for its outstanding contributions to equity, leadership development, and community empowerment, and that the city encourages continued investment in internships and workforce development programs that promote access, inclusion, and opportunity for all. Thank you.[216.48][216.48](applause) Councilmember Chavez, do you want to speak?
So, we're gonna need a head count of how many urban scholars we have here because before you all leave, which I believe is next week, the 15th, we want to make sure we give you all a resolution to take home with you. So, we'll just need a head count, maybe an email from staff of how many people are in the program, because we want to make sure you bring one home with you, because this is an incredible program. Like I mentioned earlier, my name is Jason Chavez. I was actually an urban scholar for four years, and now I'm a sitting city council member. And the reason I'm telling you all this is because this program is incredible. It completely changed my life. It allowed me to build a resume like no other. When employers would see this, they knew that this program was important. It was hard to get into, and the professional development and staff that help you through this program are incredible. So, I just want you all to know that I'm extremely proud of all of you for being here, for the taking time and commitment this summer to be a part of this incredible program. Your life is going to be changed, and your resumes are gonna be really incredible. So, I just want to make sure that you all know that this is a big deal, and we're here to celebrate all of you. But yeah, I just wanted to say a few words there.
Anybody else want to share? Director Odom?
First off, I thank you Council President Payne and Councilmember Chavez. You know, research has shown that 40% of internships are unpaid, and studies have also shown that students who participate in an internship program often get higher starting salaries and more jobs. And that really is what makes urban scholars so different, because we're not just offering you a meaningful work experience, we're offering you equity, economic equity, and economic equity for the community. So, I want to thank the council for their support in this program, and again, thank you all for that as well.
Thank you. We'll take a photo? Awesome. We will welcome Councilmember Jenkins and myself for Black Business Week.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to day one of Black Business Week.[511.44][511.44](applause) And here at the city, we are celebrating the fifth annual Black Business Week in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas since 2004, Black Business Month is celebrated in August in the United States, which celebrates the success of black entrepreneurs and honors the challenges that they face. And whereas to honor Black Business Month, Minneapolis is hosting its fifth annual Black Business Week. And whereas the goals of Black Business Week are to honor, empower, inspire, and support black businesses in the city as they play an important role in the economy. And whereas the theme this year is building legacy, with 10 events throughout the week all across the city. And whereas the fifth annual Minneapolis Black Business Week will commence at 38th and Chicago, also known as George Floyd Square, where attendees will have the opportunity to learn from both lasting and emerging black business owners about the success stories, challenges, and tools and strategies for building an entrepreneurial legacy, and support local black vendors in a market on site. And whereas Black Business Week 2025 covers a variety of events, such as a business conference and summit, panel discussions, career and networking events, black business and historical tours, self-care workshops for entrepreneurs, business mentor mentoring workshops, legal workshops, East African Business Resource Fair, a street mall, art and music festival, and...
Whereas while current numbers are challenging to track, data in 2012 and 2018 shows a 12.3% increase in black-owned businesses in Minnesota, jumping from 47,565 to 67,097. On February 19th, 2025, The Atlantic reported Minneapolis as one of three metropolitan regions where black-owned employer businesses are flourishing, and many metro areas saw the number of black-owned businesses more than double from 2017 to 2022, including Reno, Nevada, Minneapolis-St. Paul Bloomington, Minnesota, and Austin/Round Rock/San Marcos, Texas. And whereas shopping at black-owned businesses is the best way for each one of us to show support, and whereas the city of Minneapolis strives to create a more equitable and diverse business community, prioritizing entrepreneurship and assistance, cultural corridor designation, and development capital to areas of historic disinvestment. And whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes the important work of business groups and economic development organizations in supporting black-owned businesses in Minneapolis, like the West Broadway Business Area Coalition, Minnesota Black Chamber of Commerce, Metropolitan Economic Development Association, Black-Owned Business Rewards Club, Center for Economic Conclusion, Northside Economic Opportunity Network, Neighborhood Development Center, the City of Minneapolis Community Planning and Economic Development Department, and its small business team, and many others. And whereas the city of Minneapolis commends the astounding efforts of black business leaders and encourages all residents to support black-owned businesses, not only this week but throughout the year, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby celebrate Black Business Week 2025 to amplify, celebrate, strengthen, and support black business development, and encourage all Minneapolis entrepreneurs and residents to participate in events taking place from July 24th to July 31st.[774.61][774.61](applause) Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, sure. I'd love to say a few words. All right. So, hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Monner. I'm the urban scholar with the Office of the Mayor, and I just want to say for these past few weeks I've been here, we have been working a lot on Black Business Week, and it's just really amazing to see how much the city really values its black community enough to highlight a lot of black businesses and truly show the diversity within its culture. Yeah.
You know, I would add that black women are the fastest-growing business owners in our city, and so we need to celebrate that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[824.81][824.81](applause)
I was gonna say, we don't have to take a photo, but now that you're here, we do have to take a photo.[833.43][833.43](applause)
I'll see you tonight.[835.43][835.43](applause) Thank you. Do you want to keep it, or?
No, you should keep it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yes. And I'm gonna stick here, because I think I have one more resolution to go. So, I do have one more resolution that I want to share today in honor of recognizing and commemorating the 35th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm gonna invite city staff and some of our colleagues to come up and join us. How are you, my friend?
Good.
Good, good. All right. Wonderful. So, recognizing and commemorating the 35th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Yeah, I think that deserves some applause.[911.43][911.43](applause) It was a long, long battle for this to come to fruition. Whereas on July 26, 1990, President, then-President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to our efforts to fully implement and enforce the ADA. And whereas on this anniversary of the signing of the ADA, the city of Minneapolis celebrates and recognizes the contributions and talents of thousands of city residents with disabilities. And whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes the progress it has made and also reaffirms the principles of equity, inclusion, and accessibility, and recommits its efforts to reach full ADA compliance. And whereas the city of Minneapolis has been a leader in including residents with disabilities in city programs and services, with advice provided to the mayor and council, city council from the city's Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities since 1976. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize and celebrate the 35th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act.[1049.01][1049.01](applause) And, you know, I just want to give an opportunity for a few of our staff members to make some comments, and maybe we'll start with our disability coordinator?
Guthrie Beyer, Community Specialist for People with Disabilities. Just a few words, because I want to make sure that others have a chance to speak. But, so I've been in my role for nearly two years, and it's been extremely informative and rewarding to just be a part of so much of what the city does, and with a focus on including residents with disabilities in the work that we do here. And with this resolution, it's also a recommitment for myself, too, to continue to go forward and to carry that emphasis going forward. So, I want to pass this on to others here.
Ken? Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much to the council. My name is Ken Rogers. I'm the current chair of the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities. I've been a longtime member of this committee and have witnessed and experienced quite a bit of change over the years, but the support, the continuing and ongoing support that we receive from you all as city council members, as our representatives, to our city government, and to the city of Minneapolis is just exemplary. I want to congratulate you and thank you for providing the additional support. We serve to serve you all, and we are your resource in terms of disabilities. We understand that many of you may not know what it's like to live with a disability, and we do, and we can marry those and provide hand-holding and assistance to help make sure that we have the best and most inclusive policies that we could have to serve all citizens of Minneapolis. Again, thank you so much for the recognition of the ADA, 35th year signing of the ADA. Thank you.[1183.92][1183.92](applause)
Thank you. Great, great comments.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vern Noakowski. I'm an urban scholar here this summer, so you saw me earlier. So, a little bit about me, I was born with an invisible disability. I will never know what it is like to be an able-bodied person, but that's not something that's sad, it's not a tragedy, it's something that I am happy about and I'm proud about. It's taught me to thrive and live in a world that was not built with me in mind, and that's really the essence of Disability Pride Month. It's about celebrating the happiness, the strength, and the resilience of this community, and I invite everybody, whether you are disabled or able-bodied or somewhere in between, to celebrate with us, learn about the community, connect with the community, learn that disability is not scary, it's something many of us will experience at some point in our lives. So, the sooner you can connect and learn, it's the sooner you grow. So, I invite everybody to celebrate the ADA, our anniversary, because without the ADA, people like me would not be able to be up here right now. So, enjoy the rest of July.[1253.15][1253.15](applause)
Are there other folks? Karen?
Thank you. Thank you. Just quickly, I think, building on those fabulous statements, my name is Karen Mo. I serve as the Director of Neighborhood and Community Relations here in the city of Minneapolis, and I have the honor of also serving as the designated Title II Coordinator for the Americans with Disabilities Act. That's a serious honor I carry, but it's also a responsibility I carry. I do want to just make sure that I do invite everyone to join us in celebrating July and Disability Pride Month by coming out to a city-hosted event that we are planning in partnership with Ken and the advisory committee. Next week, Wednesday, July 30th, right here downtown at the Public Service Building, we'll be celebrating by having some panelists, food together, and then just being in community with one another and celebrating this significant piece of federal legislation. So, please come join us, there's more information on our website. And with that, thank you so much, council members.[1312.01][1312.01](applause)
Thank you, thank you. And thank you all, and as has been noted, at some point in all of our lives, disabilities will impact us, whether it is a temporary disability, maybe you broke your leg, or a permanent disability. Our hearing tends to go away as we age, as well as other functions in our lives. And so, you know, one of the things that this movement has brought about is this term called universal access, and you see the curb cuts? Those are, makes life accessible for everyone. They were designed for wheelchairs, but baby strollers and people with luggages who are traveling, when you get to a door in a building, I'm sure that many people, moms with bags full of groceries, et cetera, push the button so they don't have to open that door. So, this work has been making life better for each and every one of us on the planet, not just for disabled people, and so it is to be celebrated by all of us. Happy Disability Pride Month.[1400.71][1400.71](applause) Squeeze in for a nice photo.
Where are we looking?
Straight ahead.
Thank you.
All right. One more.
One more picture.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the city council for July 24th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitah.
Present.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, President Payne. I'd just like to offer a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Allison honoring the life of Chi Zong to be added to the honorary resolutions.
Councilmember Vitah has made a motion to add a resolution. It's been seconded. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne. There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and that amendment is adopted. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison is absent. Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember, or, sorry, Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of July 10th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 17 items. The first is a gift acceptance from local progress of registration, travel, and lodging expenses. Two is a collective bargaining agreement with APSME General Unit 2025 through 2027. Three is a collective bargaining agreement, Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades AFL-CIO. Four is contracts with various vendors for interpreting and translation services. Five is contracts with various vendors for the 2025 through 2028 Violence Prevention Services for Neighborhood Safety Department, and the amount to not exceed $3.1 million in total. Six is a contract with Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity, Inc. for homeowner repair assistance program. Seven is a contract with Mitre LLC for recycling awareness campaign production and placement services. Eight is a contract amendment with 2022 CIPP Materials Contract. Nine is a contract amendment with Umojo, Inc. in support of Stage One of the SMART Grant Ten is a contract amendment with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc. for engineering and design services for the Pershing Fulton Residential Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. Eleven is a lease agreement with M&amp;J V Crosstown LLC for warehouse and office space at 415 60th Street West. Twelve is a bid for last service replacements, year-two restoration-only project. Thirteen is a bid for construction of the second phase of the biochar production facility. Fourteen is a bid for planting sod and maintenance for First Avenue South. Fifteen is a legal... Fifteen is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Daniel Drews. Sixteen is a legal settlement defense and indemnification of Minneapolis Bicycle Coalition. Seventeen is the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging Appointments. And with that, I will move all items for approval and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report. And before we open up for discussion, I'll recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Osman. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report will have, will be from our Business Housing and Zoning Committee, given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Business Housing and Zoning Committee has 25 items. Item one is approving a liquor license for Put Shack. Item two is approving a liquor and 2:00 AM license for animal barbecue. Item three is approving an extended hour operation license for Mr. Dessert and Combiere in Northeast. Item four is approving extended hours with business license operating condition for Mr. Dessert and Combiere on Lake Street. Item five is authorizing a land sale for properties at Upper Harbor Terminal Site. Item six is denying a zoning administration appeal for Douglas Kelly for the property at 4428 Edmund Boulevard. Item seven is granting a variance appeal to Todd Peterson on behalf of Hiawatha ABC. Item eight is approving a five liquor license. Item nine is approving 24 liquor license renewals. Item 10 is approving a three gambling license. Item 11 is approving nine gambling license renewals. Item 12 is approving amended business license operating condition for Bizzeria Lola. Item 13 is approving a restaurant license with business license operating condition for Hammer Wayne Cafe. Item 14 is approving a rezoning ordinance for the property at 2933 Fifth Avenue South. Item 15 is approving a subordination of existing loan to Provision LLC. Item 16 is authorizing loan forgiveness to Joseph Selfagio Initiative Project at multiple properties. Item 17 is approving additional award to Exodus Housing for Development Project at St. Olaf. Item 18 is authorizing forgiveness of a great street gap financing loan to Emerged Community Development. Item nine is, I'm sorry, 19 is approving additional funding for the Litter Earth Project. Item 20 is accepting a youth work grant for the state for employment, training, and services. Item 21 is accepting multiple state grants also for employment and training services. Item 22 is approving appointment to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing for C-10. Item 23 is a resolution approving a land sale from Hennepin County Housing Redevelopment Authority. Item 24 is approving amendment to the City Tenant Relocation Assistant Legislative Directive. And lastly, item 25 is authorizing agreement for new Cowless Center operator with Art Nest. With that, I will move all items for approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I would like to move item five for a separate discussion, and I don't want to take out 17 and 25, but just want to say how excited I am that Aon, St. Olaf, and Westminster Presbyterian are collaborating to create affordable housing at this long-abandoned site in downtown, and also really excited that the Flower Exchange, number 23, will be receiving financial assistance for another affordable housing project downtown, which is really close to us here, just a couple blocks from City Hall. So really glad to see these projects moving forward. And the last one is item 25, the Cole Center, and authorizing a new agreement with both Arts Nest and Xenon is just a huge step forward for the dance community to have a performing arts center back up and running again on Hennepin Avenue. And so I want to thank the Arts and Cultural Affairs Department for their leadership on getting this agreement done, and I'm excited to be able to see dance performing again in the theater district.
Councilmember Cashman has moved to tick up item five for separate vote and discussion. Any discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to speak briefly to item number 17. And I want to thank the parishioners of St. Olaf for their patience as Exodus Housing Project has slowly moved along, and in particular Bishop Kenny for his leadership. This does provide much needed supportive housing in downtown, and I'm very grateful that they continue to work with us and the other government agencies to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the biz agenda minus item number five.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye on all except number six. No for that one.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye on all, no on six.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye on all, no on six.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye on all and nay on number six.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report, except for number six, which has four nays.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number five. I'll recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I wanted to move to delay this item one cycle to ensure that Port of Minneapolis, which is the joint venture between First Avenue and Minnesota Orchestra, which will operate the Upper Harbor site, signs a labor peace agreement with Unite Here Local 17, which is the union representing hospitality workers. I understand that this project has been in the works for a long time, and we're all so excited. And this labor peace agreement has also been on the table for years, and I think now is the time to make sure that it gets signed. I brought this up in my briefing months ago, and again at the public hearing, and I know that there is a meeting that's going to be set up very soon to discuss it. I believe a two-week delay will allow for that agreement to be signed in good faith. Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman has moved to hold this item for a cycle. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. You know, these decisions up here can be kind of tough. I get that we're all trying to advocate. We obviously all want labor to be strongly represented on this project. But I think that we've got to also be real about the context of the cycle that we're on, and I think, and this is, this delay effectively kills the project. It almost shouldn't even be a motion to delay. It should be a motion to, should just vote against the project, right? And so the reasons are a couple. The reasons I won't be supporting a delay are a few. But mainly, the issue is that we already have a year-long delay, a year-long extension on the bonding. That's $12.5 million from the state. That is the money that is making this project occur. We've already had a extensive heavy lift on just getting that extension. A delay here pushes back the closing of the deal. The closing of the deal pushes back breaking ground. If this thing doesn't break, if this, if breaking ground gets pushed out into the winter, it doesn't break ground. And if it doesn't break ground this winter, we cross into next year, $12 million goes away for this project. The project is not happening. This project's already faced extensive delays, also, you know, mostly with the, with, because of the Polad's Company, but we fought to get the CBA, the Community Benefits Agreement. That's, that was a part of why this project got pushed so far. We have a community benefits agreement. We have a developer that is not hostile to labor. They've got labor on the construction of this project. They've got, they've got an agreement with IATSE, so they already have. I have no reason to believe that they would not continue to negotiate in good faith beyond this point. If we were dealing with a bad faith actor who had a history of being hostile to labor, then, then I would maybe feel differently and probably wouldn't even be supporting this project at all. But, but I think a delay here puts us in a position where we lose $12.5 million from the state, and then we fast-forward 10 years from now, and the parcel is a desolate parcel the way that it's been for the last however many years. And, and then, and, and we have, we have this decision point to make, to make that real. And so that's my concern with the delay. Again, we're not dealing with, I have no reason to believe that with this particular project, we're dealing with somebody who's hostile to labor, and, and a delay risks us not breaking ground before the end of the year, which means we lose $12.5 million. And I don't want that to be lost on any of us. And so, and so because of those two reasons, I feel that negotiations can continue to happen in good faith, and I really want to see this project happen for the North Side. I really want to see this project happen for the community. And we can't say that we're excited about it right as, right at the moment that we're sort of pulling the rug from under it. And so I hope my colleagues can understand that. If, if I need to play a mediation role and make sure that the developer is, does come to the table with Unite Here, I'm happy to play that role. I'm happy to be involved. But I'm, but I can't sit here and support a delay that, that seems like an innocent enough action, but actually kills the project. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, President Payne. Thank you so much, Councilmember Ellison. I mean, that is it. That is the bottom line with this project is we need to move forward today. People have worked for years to see this day and to see us move forward on this project, and to have a delay that puts this entire project at risk, goes against this entire Community Benefits Agreement that folks from the North Side worked so hard on. Also, as you said just so beautifully, Councilmember Ellison, I believe that First Avenue wants to work with labor on this, and I do not believe it's going to happen in two weeks. A labor agreement, a labor agreement at this magnitude is going to take time. It is not going to be two weeks. So I don't know what we're delaying two weeks for. I completely support labor. One of the, the most exciting things about moving this project forward is the jobs and the jobs that are going to come out of labor at this site, the folks in North Minneapolis who are going to be able to walk to work and have a job in their community. But we don't have a project if we put it at risk of not even existing. So I really hope my colleagues think about this in a way of sometimes things just don't happen the way you want them to happen, but they're going to happen. And I feel strongly. Councilmember Ellison has said over and over that he will be in the negotiating rooms to make sure that this happens for labor and for this project, and I believe him. I believe that he will see this through. I'm going to see it through. The community is. This is probably the most community-driven project I've had an opportunity to work on. So community is not going to let us, let them down, nor just let this happen without some sort of fight. They've been fighting for this from day, fighting for this or against this, whatever way they landed, since day one, and I think that that's going to continue. I'm just hoping we don't risk losing $12.5 million, which we need desperately for this project to be seen through because of a delay. That would be completely devastating and heartbreaking to a community that has been traditionally underserved and is looking forward to finally having this river access, these jobs, this housing. So please, colleagues, really, really, really think about the decision we're making today. And hopefully, we all can stay in the fight of making sure labor is represented. I think we all want that across the board. I think we all will make sure that's going to happen, but it is not worth the entire project going down. Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison, you speak very well about what a delay would do, and you do have more experience on this council and these labor matters other than Councilmember Palmasano. Perhaps you could explain to us, and, excuse me, and Councilmember Jenkins, you're sitting right next to me. How could I forget you? I'm sorry. I apologize. Apologize. Perhaps you could explain to us what other measures there are along the way should the good faith bargaining not happen? What other opportunities do we have to support Local 17?
Councilmember Ellison?
You know, for this deal, off the top of my head, I don't know what further zoning or approvals the project would need, right? So I think we would need staff here for today to answer that question, and I, and I know that staff's not able to be here. Director Hanson has, has an appointment that he could not miss and wasn't able to be here to answer those kinds of detailed questions. You know, but with large construction projects that, you know, I've, they, they rarely just sort of go from breaking ground all the way to, or they rarely just kind of go through their entire process without needing something from council, but I can't sit here and answer that question without knowing the full details of breaking ground to finish.
But would you feel comfortable that there will be other opportunities if there's not the good faith bargaining that we expect?
Just hard to answer. We, if this, if there is no, if there is no zoning needs, if there are no land use needs, then, then the project would break ground and go and, and finish construction before it's back before council for some other reason. But I think, I think a better question is to look at, not a better question, but I think another question is to ask at the track record of, of the operator and the developer. And I think that they, I do think that they have a track record of being, of working with labor and utilizing union labor in their facilities. And so that's, you know, that's, that's more what I'm looking at and, and leaning on. But yeah, but I can't say. If, if, if there aren't a lot of, if there aren't a lot of zoning and land use needs between here and, and breaking ground, then it, then it wouldn't come before council again necessarily.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I just had a follow-up question, considering I'm not on the biz committee. So in the email that we just received from Director Hanson, if Councilmember Ellison or Councilmember Cashman wants to address us as being members of the committee. So this project right now is set to either, oh, well, break ground or construction to start in September. What is starting in September?
Councilmember Ellison?
That, yeah, that'd be a better question for the, for the developer to know, but I, you know, because I wouldn't be able to get into the, the construction calendars and that kind of stuff. I wouldn't, I could speculate from experience, but I don't, I wouldn't actually know for this specific project.
I think that's a big piece of information, considering, and just for the public, like a delay in this will bring us to a vote on this on August 7. And I know, again, Director Hanson just mentioned that the project is scheduled to close in September, so this seems like this would still allow us to be within that timeline. So that's, and your comments, it sound like we were either breaking ground as soon as possible, like in fall, and just trying to get clear on what specifically is being stalled out or done in September where this, this delay would kind of undermine that.
Yeah. I, after we pass this action for the sale, then they go to the final closing. I don't know how long that takes because we're not the only party involved in that closing. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a complicated sort of financial stack, is my understanding. And so, and so it just pushes, my understanding is that it pushes the due diligence on all of that back. It's not like we do the sale today, they go downstairs and close the deal. That has its own process. And so, and so, so a delay in our process delays that process, which then could, which then delays the construction schedule. And, and, you know, construction workers aren't going to just sit around and wait indefinitely. They're going to move on to other projects, which, which then gets us into that dangerous
Thanks for that information.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I just kind of wanted to express my frustration with a couple of different things here. First, like, I don't know why we're setting up votes on huge projects where the council is not able to do a two-week cycle delay. Like, we should consider that making a common practice because delays on this body happen all of the time. And for such a large project to be do or die over a single cycle delay for more conversations, that's pretty concerning. And also getting some extra clarity on if a delay would precisely do that, that would be helpful. And maybe this is a conversation we might need to have like later into our agenda so we can get through the other parts of business. But there's a lot of unanswered questions here. We have the CPED director emailing us because he's out of town and there are CPED questions. And for me particularly, like, I do have a commitment to the workers in this city. That's like one that I can't back down from and one that I won't. And we know that the workers at First Avenue had to work really, really hard to get a collective bargaining agreement because they did not feel like they were getting their fair share at that space. And I also want to say, a labor peace agreement is not the same as a collective bargaining agreement. It's not as tumultuous. And we got a labor peace agreement for the IATSE workers. And so I'm struggling to understand why we can't get even just a public commitment, even if it hasn't happened today, on a labor peace agreement. Like, I want to believe that since an LPA has happened for IATSE, that it will happen for Unite Here. But I need to hear that. And so like, if there is time for the developer or the person that makes the decisions between now and maybe us taking this up later where that commitment can be made, I would feel better about this vote. But it's hard for me to be put in, I think a lot of us are now put in this space where it's like, we really support Upper Harbor Terminal. This is a really important project. And we have a commitment to the workers and this is a city-led project on land that is public. And to not have clarity on an LPA, which feels like if we got it for another union, if we can't, we should be able to get it for this one, it's tough. So I'll also state, like, I am also a little frustrated in the way that this conversation is happening so spontaneously because it's kind of a big one. But this council also isn't new to this type of thing. And so this, again, might be something we need to just move later on to get the right people to answer these questions, maybe get a commitment from the developer and the people that calls the shots on these projects that, yes, they will do an LPA to kind of help us move along. And if that's something that we need to tackle today, happy to. But there's just a lot going on here and I don't think it's like an easy, like, okay, now let's go call the roll and take this vote. Like, I will say, that's not the case for me. There's like a lot to wrap my head around on this. And I'll just close with where I started. Like, if we have huge projects on our agenda, we should not, we should not make it that a two-week, one-cycle delay would end up killing it. Like, this happens at City Hall all the time. It's happened for years. We should not set these things up to be this way.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. I definitely feel a lot of the same ways as Councilmember Chowdhury. I do want to speak to the delay issue. It's because I think that this project's been delayed, has faced delays for years and even got, we had to go to the state to get an extension on this money. And so it's not, so what looks like a sort of a final do-or-die moment for this term and this council is actually sort of the result of seven or eight years of delays of the project. And so it's not actually just sort of like, okay, we're at this moment and why do we not have time? It's because we've sort of eaten that time over the years over multiple councils. But I think that your point is well taken. And if there's a desire for us to take this up, to move this to the end of the agenda, I would welcome that. You know, I mean, I know how I'm going to vote. If folks know how they're going to vote, we can take it up now. But if folks want more time to try to interface with staff or see if we can get relevant staff here and they think moving this to the end of the agenda will accomplish that, then I'm open to that as well.
Councilmember Wonsley.
I'm seeing from both councilmembers, maybe a motion to table to the end, which I will make the motion.
Second.
All right. And I will say, if there is a way to get staff here in time for that piece, because where I'm also not seeing how a delay would kind of unravel things is just looking at the Upper Harbor conveyance redevelopment and funding agreement terms contract. On page two of it, it has a clause on here that says, "Construction start and completion dates." And it states, "All financing, including the state grant, must be closed by November 28, 2025. Construction on the site must start within four months of closing. And construction must be completed no later than 24 months of closing, subject to extensions for delays caused by force events and things of that nature." But it states in this first sentence around, "All the funding has to be done by November of 2025." So I would love to get clarity once again, how.
Our process, not the state's process.
Right. So this agreement is only just for the state process?
No. So the agreement has to take, so we have our processes. And then every other financer in the project has their processes. And so, you know, so that might be sort of our stipulations. I don't have it off the top of my head or in front of me. But that's not necessarily representative of the state bonding money, that timeline that you laid out.
So all financing, so the bonding, from my understanding, like you're saying, all the parties involved would have to have their financing in place and it includes the state grant. I assume that would mean the city of Minneapolis also. That's why I was like, I would love to get staff's understanding of how these things are relating.
I recommend that we move forward on our vote to move this to the end of our agenda so that these questions might need the technical expertise of staff. So.
Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, President Payne. Who is the staff that's coming? I mean, the director is not here. I'm really trying to understand who is coming to answer these questions, even if we, I'm not against delaying it, but I haven't and I don't know if someone else has. I'm just trying to clarify who's the person that's going to come and help clarify these things. And also, I wanted to say that, you know, there's a public hearing about this. That was weeks ago. This stuff should have came up during that public hearing and a delay should have came up then. And all of these things that we're dealing with right now, there was an opportunity previously. I don't sit on the biz committee. I watch it when I need to. But Councilmember Cashman, who is delaying this, is on biz and this really could have happened weeks ago. And we could have had this discussion. And all the things we needed to talk to staff about could have been. We've had briefings. I've had them with Councilmember Cashman where she's brought this up. And I'm just not understanding, what are we going to get out of taking this to the back end? If we don't have staff identified, and what are these questions that couldn't have been answered within this last month of public hearings? And we've taken several votes on Upper Harbor Terminal to receive the money from the state. No one said anything. Like, we've taken several votes in the last couple of months. So I'm really trying to understand what we're going to accomplish on the back end.
Mr. Clark, you raised your hand.
Mr. President, I was just going to say that as this discussion came up, that there's a potential to table this to the end of the meeting. I've been sending out to all the staff who are listed on the RCA that council has questions. Please come, be prepared. So I'm sending that email now. That's about as good as I can do to see if we can get anyone here who can address council's questions and the issue about the impact of a two-week delay on the overall project.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
I just, I think that's usually what happens here, right? If we don't have the appropriate staff available in our chambers or the director, they look to their deputy and we're giving them time to kind of come together so we can accomplish our business. So that's what I'm hoping that we can do here.
Councilmember Rynville.
Thank you. I would move to suspend the rule so we could have the developer come up and speak to us to their intention on signing this labor agreement. Let's just hear from them directly. We don't need staff.
Let's table this to the end. We'll see who will be available once we get through the rest of our business. And then we can take this item back up for discussion and have whomever, is there a second to?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, no. We've already got a motion in front of us, which is to move, to table this to the end of our agenda. So with that, I'll actually ask the clerk to call the roll on that motion. Councilmember Osman.
I was just going to say quickly, Director Hanson sent an email, so I would refer that to some of the members to read the potential it could have for having a delay. Thank you.
Okay. The motion before us is to table this to the end of our agenda. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rynville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Coskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and we will take that item up once we finish the remainder of our business. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward nine items. Item one is an ordinance related to the Special Service District's advisory board composition. Item two is an ordinance amending, amendment that eliminates the sunset provision for the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District. Item three is passage of a resolution accepting a grant from MINDOT for the South Falwell Safe Routes to School and authorizing an agreement for that grant. Item four is a resolution accepting a grant from MPCA, a resiliency grant for Oliver Avenue's South Flood Mitigation Project and authorizing an agreement for that grant. Item five is passage of a resolution accepting local road improvement program grant from Minnesota Department of Transportation for ADA ramps in the Shingle Creek West Residential Project and authorizing an agreement for that grant. Item six is approving an appointment to the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I want to thank all the residents who applied for that board. Item seven is authorizing renewal of the pilot permit program for personal delivery devices. Item eight is approving a sound permit for the Walker Art Center, Avant Garden, for an event on September 20, 2025. And item nine is approving the traffic safety camera pilot framework. I will move approval of all items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly speak to item number nine, the traffic safety camera pilot framework. I think this is a really great advancement towards our vision zero goals to end traffic deaths in the city. And I want to thank Ethan Folly from Public Works for his leadership in getting this legislation at the state years ago and getting this through in the city. I'm excited to see the impacts of having five cameras set up around the city. And I understand that there is some flexibility to move them as well. I hope that we will get approval to set these up on Hennepin County roads in the future as well as I know Lake Street, Lyndale, Penn, Cedar, and so many Hennepin roads are actually the most high-injury streets in our city. And finally, just want to speak to some of the surveillance and data concerns that folks have raised. And I know Ethan and others from Public Works have explained all of the data privacy practices that are involved in the contract to me in an email, which I will forward to all the council members and include in my newsletter too for those who are interested. Thank you.
Seeing no one else left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rynville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent.
Aye.
Councilmember Coskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Committee of the Hold, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez. Oh, Councilmember Ellison, there you go. Assuming the clerk received that, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Payne. The Committee of the Hold is bringing four items forward. The first is a resolution calling on the Trump administration to end their mass deportations and family separations. Item number two is authorizing an increase to the contract with DLG for external investigator services to the Internal Affairs Division of the Police Department. Item number three is authorizing an increase to a contract with Benchmark Buyer to include a performance management module for services related to an early intervention system within MPD. And lastly, item number four is authorizing a contract with Wellness that fits for MPD behavioral and mental health support among other services. With that, I will approve of all these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, I wanted to thank the chair and staff for bringing a presentation about item number four, the contract with Wellness that fits to Committee of the Hold, just so we could all understand it. It's a large amount of money. I'm really pleased to see this contract come forward and was sorry to see that our previous contracts somehow didn't fully meet our needs. It was spoken about at Committee of the Hold a bit. As a longtime proponent of mental health and well-being for our officers who do high-stress, dangerous jobs, we really need officers who are supported with counseling. I learned some interesting statistics from that presentation. But we all need to deal with the stress of our jobs so that we can all be our best. Ignoring officers' mental health is not in anyone's best interest, especially the residents of Minneapolis. It sounds like this is a great match to provide like a more comprehensive and culturally appropriate mental health support, and I'm happy to support this contract.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rynville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Coskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley is absent.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward seven items. Item number one is authorizing a grant application from the Minnesota Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for emergencies and disasters and accepting said grants. Item number two is authorizing a joint powers agreement with the city of Brooklyn Park to conduct wage investigations. Item number three is authorizing a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide bomb squad services to other municipalities in the state. Item number four and item number five are joint powers agreements with the cities of Maple Grove and the city of Minnetonka respectively to provide legal services. Item number six is approving various appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. And item number seven is authorizing a funding agreement with the city of Lake's Community Land Trust for real estate purchase. This is to facilitate urban farming on purchased lots. I will approve of these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rynville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Coskey.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted and that completes the reports of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have one notice today. Councilmember Cashman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Streets and Sidewalks Code, renewing the Downtown Business Improvement District for an additional five-year period. Are there any questions on this notice? Seeing none, that notice is hereby given and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. Pursuant to notice, Councilmember Cashman moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code for first reading and referral to the Business, Housing and Zoning Committee, amending regulations related to on-premises and off-premises signage. May I have a motion to approve this introduction?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to outline a little bit what our goal here is with the amendments to the several parts of the zoning code that relate to signage. So our goal is to update the signage code to create more opportunities for signage that contributes to our community, like artistic and aesthetic signs, selective use of digital signs in the downtown entertainment district, creative use of signage on skyways to help tourists, residents, visitors, workers, everyone navigate our downtown, help customers find our small businesses, signage that advertises local artists, venues, events, and even potential signage on public buildings like the convention center to generate revenue for the city. We also aim to reduce opportunities for signage that do not contribute to the cities, such as those on vacant buildings. We will not be able to tackle it all at once, so we expect that this will be a two-part process with a second phase that focuses mainly on the off-premises signage, otherwise known as billboards, to follow later on. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Seeing no one else left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the ordinance proposal is referred to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. The next order of business is resolutions. We have four resolutions on our agenda today, including the late addition of a resolution honoring the life of Shi Zhong. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you. I just have to use this opportunity to shout out Daisy Vang, who is the intern in my office this summer. She's doing an amazing project, collecting feedback on our 2026 city budget, and has already received like over 100 responses to her survey, going out in community, making sure that we are setting ourselves up in 2026 to meet all the needs of residents. So thank you so much, Daisy, for your work in the Ward Seven office, and thank you to everyone who contributed to the National Intern Day honorary resolution.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I wanted to just take an opportunity to thank our staff who worked on Black Business Week, certainly my staff, Diva Sadar, Christina Mitchell from the mayor's office, Rebecca Fabumi, Lisa Amenor, the CPAD team and all of their efforts. Oteel has been a great partner. I want to thank our community partners, the West Broadway Area Coalition, NDC, the 38th and Chicago Business Association, and so many other community partners. And really want to just shout out our black businesses in the city for their contributions to making, for enriching our city and our economy, and this hopefully will support them. There are a number of events that are going on this week that folks can attend, starting this evening, the Legacy on the Block, which is a black business showcase organized by Healthy Roots Institute, the City Food Studio, Plot Gallery, the Agape Movement, Sabanthony Community Center, and Central Area Neighborhood Development Organization, Can Do. And there's an event this evening at the square, and invite everybody there. Tomorrow, Ignite Business Conference from Spark to Strategy, which will be at the Minneapolis Institute of Arts. On Saturday, at the Capri Theater, there will be Black Business Week Street Mall. Also on Saturday, the Weber Camden and Northside Epicenter Black Business Week Expo, Black Business Expo will be going on, the Weber Camden Neighborhood Organization and the Northside Epicenter. On Monday, July 28th, the East African Business Resource Fair at the Brian Coyle Center. Then on Tuesday, the Business of Self-Care, a micro-workshop for entrepreneurs, and that will be, I'm not sure where that's located, but Wednesday at the Midtown Global Market, there's a Black Business Week Summit. Thursday at the Camden Social Black Business Exchange, Speed Mentoring with experts organized by the West Broadway Business and Area Coalition. And then the final event on Thursday, July 31st, Entity Essentials, LLCs, corporations, and more explained, organized by Just Law. So just wanted to shout those events out, and hopefully everyone can get out and support black businesses, not only this week and the month of August, but each and every day in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you, Mr. President.
I see the clerk in priority queue.
Mr. President, with your indulgence, I wanted to build on comments that were made by Councilmember Cashman. The Legislative Department this year was thrilled to be able to host three urban scholars. Daisy Vang is mentioned in Ward Seven. We also had Iris in our information technology design team, and Kassarin in our constituent services team. Every year, we love to have the urban scholars join us. I'm proud to say that the Legislative Department was the first one to actually hire an urban scholar in a full-time capacity years ago in its second cohort. We hired a young woman named Jillina Demi to lead our voter outreach and education functions in our Elections and Voter Services Division. She did an excellent job in that capacity. I had the honor to be able to speak to this year's cohort of urban scholars earlier this week to talk about our local government here in the city of Minneapolis, government structure, the role of the city council, and certainly tried to lay the seeds with each of them that a career in local government in the future is something that should strongly be of interest to them, that the city of Minneapolis is better for their time with us, and we would love to have them come back in full-time capacities and to keep them interested in local government as a potential career. They are the next generation of leaders to fill the roles we have, not only in the rank and file, but also, as Councilmember Chavez pointed out, he himself, as an urban scholar, now sits as a policymaker on the council. And so I think that the Urban Scholars Program, just reiterating its importance, how all of our 25 departments take advantage of it, and that in many cases, we have students who come back year after year during their college years and who build networks and professional associations with those of us who are in the bureaucracy. And so look forward to continuing to develop those relationships with many of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Well, I thought I had to sneeze. Thank you, President Payne. In regards to the resolution honoring the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, I did want to put on my colleagues' radar that in the Administration Enterprise Oversight Committee, on August 7th, we're actually going to be receiving a presentation, an update presentation from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department that's going to give us an overview of the work that they're doing supporting the ADA, digital and physical accessibility, and we're going to hear from the city's advisory committee on people's with disabilities around their action items and recommendations that we need to be looking at as a body to, again, become a more inclusive and accessible city. So I just wanted to put that on my colleagues' radar. That's on August 7th, again, at 1:30 PM.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm actually in queue for announcements, so happy to do that whenever is the correct time for it.
Yeah, we can take up announcements right after this.
Okay, perfect.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I do have to speak to the Americans with Disabilities Act that we are celebrating today, and disability pride, and just challenge our city staff and building owners to ensure that the public, as well as our staff and workers who may be dealing with disabilities, be they invisible and/or otherwise, that we ensure that we have adequate, accessible workspaces for those employees. I am experiencing significant challenges with accessing our workspace in City Hall, and, you know, I anticipate that those issues will be resolved. However, I really want to challenge our staff to think proactively, not wait for someone to complain or to bring these issues to the forefront, but to really think proactively about how do we make our city building, the people's building, more accessible so that everyone will have access to our city hall? Thank you.
Well said. May I have a motion to adopt the resolutions?
So moved.
Second. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. And before we take up announcements, we do have unfinished business, item number five from Biz. I've heard from the clerks that there are staff on the way, but I've also heard mutterings of maybe a potential conversation that has happened. Councilmember Rainville wanted to suspend the rules, but without objection, I would welcome up representatives from that project to speak to some of the questions. All right.
Yes, sorry. You'd think I've been to enough of these meetings that I would know the process by now. Hi, I'm Dana Frank. I'm the owner, CEO of First Avenue Productions and a development partner on Upper Harbor for the last decade.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Did, okay, I see Councilmember Ellison in queue.
Hi, Dana. Thank you for being here today. And also, I know that we have representation from Unite Here as well, so if we want to hear from them as well. But just wanted to get your perspective on you all's commitment to labor, both in the project so far, but also specifically in continuing to have discussions and reach an agreement with Unite Here.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this was always, we always knew this was going to be a union project through the state bonding process. We committed to union and construction. IATSE, representatives of IATSE, were next to us at the state bonding hearing in March 2020. They were at all the public engagement committees. They were designing the workforce development program. You know, immediately, we sent an LPA out to them, and Councilmember Cashman, when you asked about labor at the public hearing a week ago, you know, you asked about our commitment to an LPA, and we answered, absolutely, we have an LPA out to IATSE. I think through, you know, the history, my own history at First Avenue, when our employees announced their intention to unionize, we didn't go to a vote. We negotiated in good faith immediately. We got to a contract. We're operating under that contract. So, you know, I don't think there is any, I hope you would not question our developers' commitment to union and to labor on this project. In terms of the delay, this meeting was supposed to happen in May, and then it was supposed to happen in June, then it was supposed to happen July 10th, and then this was the absolute last date for an approval process for us to meet our construction deadline in the fall. So the way the state bonding process happens is we have to submit to MMB, a budget, sources and uses, secured funding, et cetera. That will all not apply if we push our construction past the ability to put footings in the ground before frost. So, you know, there were some questions before about, like, the state deadline might technically be in November, but our deadline is end of September to beat the frost and to put our foundations in the ground. So if we have to go to new pricing, new budgets, new MMB process, that effectively kills the project. So I hope that is helpful information to you guys all.
Thank you. That is helpful. And last question, I know that Unite Here has a request for a meeting out to you. Can you let us know your commitment to following through on that meeting and making sure that that happens?
Yeah, absolutely. We responded, you know, this is a complicated project, and the nine years and 150 community engagement processes, I, both as a project developer and as an individual and Minneapolitan, made a lot of commitments to community. That is my first and foremost responsibility to this project, and I promised northside vending opportunities, I promised workforce development, I promised this to be a truly community-first project. And so, you know, entering into an agreement with the hospitality union that would cover a lot of these youth employments, a lot of these neighborhood jobs, a lot of the northside vendors that we promised spaces to vend at this site, is a conversation that I need to have with community at the table. And so we responded, saying absolutely, but I have to wait for the community representative to determine who they want to be at the table, what their dates are. I'm absolutely committed to negotiating in good faith with those partners at the table with me.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you so much, President Payne, and thank you so much, Dana, for coming and speaking. I think we can hold multiple truths here. Like, we are really, really excited for this project and the work that you are doing and the vision for it, absolutely, and want to see it be successful. But this questioning around commitment to workers, like, that's our job here, that's where the rubber meets the road, and it felt important to get that clarity, especially when it came to Unite Here. And the one question I just have for you is, are you committed on working on getting to a labor peace agreement with Unite Here?
Yeah, like I said, absolutely negotiating in good faith with, like, like I said, there's a number of partners, namely the community groups and the CBA, that, again, like, nine days ago, everyone was really excited about. That is our commitment to the community. So absolutely, and like I said, I think our history, the past 18 months, we've always negotiated in good faith. So absolutely, I'm happy to say that. No compunction whatsoever.
Thank you so much. And I don't know if others have questions for Dana, but I did want to hear from Wade, representing Unite Here, just kind of hear for him as we are making decisions on this item today.
Anything else?
We'll go back in queue, right?
We have one more person in queue. I'm not sure if the question will be for you, so I might want to hang out. Wade, why don't you come on up? Welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers and Chair Payne. Wade Lunenburg with Unite Here, political director. We are a union of 7,000 workers here in hospitality in our major sports facilities, our convention centers, 24 union hotels, craft brewing and distilling, and we are in the night venue business with Dana Frank. Thank you for taking the time. We really appreciated the engagement here today, what seemed like us coming to the table late. I just want you to know that we have been trying to achieve a labor peace agreement for quite some time. City staff has known about this issue for years, and we are pleased now to see that there's a commitment from Port of Minneapolis LLC to negotiate with Unite Here Local 17. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. That's my comments.
Councilmember Cashman.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just wanted to thank both partners for being here. I know how important it is for us to move this project forward, and just representing so many Unite Here residents in Ward Seven who live and work downtown, I'm really excited that they're going to have, you know, good union jobs at this venue and all the other benefits that this will bring to our city. So with that, I'm going to rescind my motion to delay and move this item for approval.
Councilmember Cashin has withdrawn her motion to delay and has moved approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? I don't think so. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that item is adopted, and that completes all items on our agenda. Our next order of business is announcements. Do councilmembers have any announcements? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. So I would like to share that tomorrow at around 5:30 at Longfellow Park, there is going to be the annual corn roast held by the Minneapolis Park Board. I'll just share with my colleagues here, last year, within 45 minutes of the event, 1,000 ears of corn were taken by our constituents and eaten, and there were movies in the park. So this is just like an awesome day that happens in the neighborhood. I'm super excited to celebrate. The neighborhood just smells really, really good. So if anyone wants to come down to the 12th Ward and have an ear of corn, please come down to the corn roast. The other thing that I will announce, and I'm sure potentially Councilmember Kosky is thinking about announcing it, and will probably see her out there, is Nakomis Days is happening on August 1st to the 3rd. This is a beloved Nakomis East tradition that happens in the first week of August, and our local business association hosts it. They have local businesses using their storefronts, parking lots, and they have events for the community. There's an annual parking lot party at Bull's Horn that I'll be attending. It's a really good time, great music, great food. Last year, they had Korean-style hot dogs. So like, a lot to offer in the 12th Ward. So just mark your calendars, and we'll see you out there.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, President Payne.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to announce that on Wednesday, July 30th, Effective Law Enforcement, the Independent E evaluator, it's going to be hosting a meeting in Ward Four at Lucy Laney. It's going to be from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. I would appreciate if everyone can join us for this super-important meeting. And I don't have the details yet. I'm sure we can find it, but there's going to be a pretty awesome big truck parade hosted by the city of Minneapolis next week. And that parade is, all the big trucks we have in our fleet here is going to be showcased on behalf of the city of Minneapolis.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm excited for Corn Fest in Ward 12. My sister lives over there, and I went last year. Unfortunately, the corn had run out by the time I got there, which is a good problem to have, I guess. But also want to shout out the Loring Park Arts Festival happening in Loring Park this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 5. And many of our vibrant storefronts, awardees, the artists that we've been supporting through that incredible program, will also be setting up shop there, so it's an opportunity to come and meet with them as well. So come through Loring Park if you don't have anything else going on this weekend.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, just for the clarity of the record, when we adopted the honorary resolutions, there was one that was amended to be added at the beginning of the meeting, and we failed to sort of restate that when there was a vote. So for clarity, I just want to, okay, just want to make sure I didn't catch that, so thanks.
Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, not here to announce events that are coming up, but grateful for what's in store in Minneapolis in the upcoming weeks. I'm actually hoping to use this opportunity to invite colleagues, those in the chambers, and, you know, maybe the five people that watch along on YouTube, to join me in congratulating Councilmember Chowdhury, who got engaged in between our last meeting and this one. Look at the size of that rock. Congratulations.
Guys in the back room, can we get the camera?
Me and CVP are 2026 brides. Let's go.
I added myself to queue because I am excited to announce that Open Streets is coming back to Central Avenue on August 2nd. This was a long time in the making. The last time that we had Open Streets on Central Ave was pre-pandemic. And as we know, that we've changed the model of how Open Streets works, and I worked really closely with some of my neighborhood leaders to bring it back to Northeast. So I'm just really proud to see this happening, and I hope that you will join me in downtown Northeast on August 2nd. Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I'm one cycle late on this, thank you. But we had a big debate here about the joint powers agreement with the State Patrol, and we agreed to enter into that. And the deciding factor, I believe, as Councilmember Chowdhury had mentioned, the Fourth of July, that they be available. So last Fourth of July, they helped our police department at the Stone Arch Bridge. They discovered three cars with explosive rockets in the back, and they helped secure that. And they also helped a lot in downtown with our police. And I have to shout out the park police, who stopped a truck, a box truck full of explosives over in the North Loop. So these joint powers agreements, whether it's the State Patrol or the park police, are working well to keep our citizens safe, and I thank you for the vote on that last cycle. So thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. As many of you know, this week is Aquintino Week, and unfortunately, last night, the parade was canceled, but there are several events still moving forward this week, culminating with a fireworks show on Saturday night at, is it going to be?
Stone Arch Bridge.
Stone Arch Bridge. So come out and celebrate the city of Lakes and check out some amazing fireworks. I think it's sponsored by Macy's. Target? So it's going to be a great show.
Seeing no one else left in queue, with that, we've completed our business today, and with nothing further to come before the council, and without objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned.